Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Sawyer. I'm the Superintendent of Schools here, and this is the first school committee meeting after the annual town election, which means this is the only meeting of the year that I open. Under Policy Number 112, the Meeting for Organization, excuse me, the school committee organizes and elects a chairperson and officers. So it is my duty to open the floor to have the vote for the next chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and at this time, I will open the floor for nominations.
I would like to nominate Erin Boucher for Chair of the School Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any conversation or discussion? Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Boucher, and Ms. Boucher can take the gavel and run the rest of the votes here.
Great, thank you. I will now take nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Rachel Shrivapur for Vice Chair.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I will take nominations now for Secretary.
I'd like to nominate John Wensky for Secretary.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll do a little shifting.
Changing in a guard. Take your hand. It's John Wensky, and I want that.
Yes.
I'm Erin Boucher, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, May 14th. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Liz Poplasky and Shrewsbury Media Connection for their assistance with our broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting. The first item on our agenda tonight is public participation. Tonight, we have not received any requests to speak of public participation. Public participation is available to all residents who would like to address the committee regarding concerns of policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent. In the future, anyone who wishes to speak at public participation should contact the chairperson in advance of the next scheduled school committee meeting. The next item on the agenda is Chairperson's and Members' Report. Colleagues, anything to share this week?
I'd just like to congratulate you on reelection to the committee and welcome Rajesh, as our new member, to the school committee. Very happy to have you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I would just like to thank the voters of Shrewsbury for their support of my candidacy. I'm honored to begin my second term, and I would like to also welcome Mr. Veligapudi to our committee. I'd also like to thank Mr. Wensky for his service as Chair for the second time. We appreciate his dedication and service, and this is during his fourth term of the school committee, so, thank you. Dr. Sawyer, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. I want to also congratulate you on your reelection to your second term, and Mr. Veligapudi to be joining the committee in his first term. We appreciate your service. This is, just to remind those in the community, this is an elected position. It is a volunteer position in that there's no compensation, and school committee members spend an enormous amount of hours doing the work to support our school district and govern it, and very much appreciate your support. Looking forward to working with Mr. Veligapudi and working, again, with Ms. Boucher and working with you as Chair. I also wish to thank Mr. Wensky for his services as Chair over the past year. There is extra effort and work that comes with that, and appreciate all the time he put into that, supporting our schools. In addition to that, I just want to mention two things that actually happened this afternoon at Shrewsbury High School. First, I was, had the pleasure of attending a unified track meet, Unified Athletics is, we are a Unified Champion School District, as deemed by the Massachusetts Special Olympics. It's where students with and without disabilities work together on a team, and part of that athletic endeavor. There was a meet between Shrewsbury and Hudson today. It was wonderful to see our student athletes performing and cheering each other on, and it was just a terrific event. Want to thank the coaches and everyone involved with that program. After that, I was able to attend the annual spring SHS art show. The visual arts pieces were outstanding as usual. I want to thank all of our visual arts teachers from Shrewsbury High School, all of our students who participated, whether they were paintings, digital art, ceramics, photographs, sculptures, ran the gamut, and we have extremely talented students, but they could not produce that level of really outstanding art without the excellent instruction and guidance from their, from their teachers. So, want to thank them all, and Ms. Plank, who's the Director of the Visual Arts Department, for an outstanding art show. Not a Superintendent's Report this evening.
Our next time-scheduled appointment is a sponsorship. We'll be taking a vote. In accordance with school committee policy 912, sponsorship and advertising, sponsorships involving an amount greater of $5,000 must be approved by the school committee. Dr. Lazzat, Ms. Belcito, and Mr. Costa will acknowledge two sponsorships from Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union. The first is to provide $100,000 towards the purchase of a wheelchair-accessible van, ice cream cart, and freezer to be used for the RISE program, and the second is to provide $40,000 towards improvements to the Shrewsbury High School Fitness Center. Mr. Michael Hale, Community Relations Officer from Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, is in attendance at the meeting, and a memo from Dr. Lazzat and Ms. Belcito and copies of memorandum of understanding are enclosed in our packets for tonight. So, I'd like to come forward.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Michael Hale for being with us this evening, and Jim DuPont and the Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union team for their incredible generosity. As you mentioned, Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union is seeking to provide two sponsorships totaling $140,000 to the Shrewsbury Public Schools. And as Ms. Boucher mentioned, the first is to provide $100,000 toward the purchase of a wheelchair-accessible van, ice cream cart, and freezer to be used by all RISE students and staff, and the second is to provide $40,000 toward improvements needed to the SHS Fitness Center.
So, the van will serve our RISE students participating in career exploration opportunities, including internships, job shadowing, and workforce development-related activities. Additionally, the van will be used to transport students, staff, ice cream treats to community events, local businesses, and various celebrations, as our students engage in life-learning experiences focused on communication, teamwork, organization, marketing, customer service, budgeting, and advertising. Skills including the following will be strengthened as a result of these opportunities: critical thinking, communication, problem-solving, leadership, and adaptability. As our RISE students shared in their proposal to Mr. Hale, going to internships teaches us independence and job skills for the future. Going out into the community allows us to practice community safety skills, practice money skills, practice how to make purchases, and practice how to navigate different stores while working on becoming more independent.
Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union's donation of $40,000 towards improvements of the SHS Fitness Center will provide continued wellness opportunities for our SHS community. The Fitness Center provides training space for athletes and non-athletes for conditioning, injury prevention, and rehabilitation, and can be used by the staff outside of the school day. The space offers a variety of equipment for cardiovascular exercise, strength training, and other conditioning activities. Equipment including treadmills, elliptical trainers, rowing machines, weight training equipment, free weights, and machines are regularly maintained, and yet, regular updates and regular maintenance. You will recall that the Shrewsbury Athletic Booster Club made a gift of $62,000 towards this last year. And the Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union sponsorship will enable us for the project to be completed this summer.
We're very grateful to the credit union for the generous financial donation, and truly appreciate its longstanding partnership with our schools, our students, and our staff. As you have all heard many times before, Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union consistently provides our students with internships, paid employment, and exposure to careers at our high school Career Day, Career Fair, the OMS Career Day, while responding to requests for a variety of support, and they do so with great enthusiasm and interest, and always saying, "Tell us more, and we would like to help out in any way we can," and they do it. So, thank you, Michael Hale and team.
So, would you like to see what the students?
I would.
So, the students at the RISE program created a very short video that they wanted to share with everyone tonight, especially the Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, and they've already named what the ice cream part of the business, and they have decided it will be called Chilled by Maple and Maine.
Ice cream.
We all scream.
For ice cream!
Boy, it's hot out here. Wish I had some ice cream. Did someone say ice cream?
Maine is proud to present the new ice cream cart, Chilled by Maple and Maine. We are excited to start selling our, selling ice cream from our new ice cream cart. A new event will allow us to take our cart to events. We'll store products in our, in our new freezer chest. We are all very excited for this new opportunity and the skills we learned.
Thank you, Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union!
So, I'd just like to say a couple words, if you, if I, if you'd be kind enough to let me. First of all, it feels really good to be in here when we aren't talking about municipal and school revenue-sharing dirt, budget seasons. Thirty-plus years in this room and others discussing those issues. I recently saw Patrick Collins at the grocery store, and we were reminiscing on how great of a place it was to work, however, we certainly don't miss the tedious late-evening hours of discussing municipal and school budgets. That said, you know, I think it's time to just take a really deep breath, as Dr. Lazzat has all taught us, and her students, smile a little, and be thankful that we are able to give positive news and positive developments like this to our community. The credit union has long and continues to be laser-focused on giving back. These gifts represent our ongoing commitment to enhancing the community for which we all live. I think it's important that you know that we are nonprofit, which distinguishes a little bit from us, from some of our competitors in the banking industry. Our success is your success. When we're successful, we're able to share and make donations like this that stay within the community and help everybody out, whether it's the school system or other nonprofit organizations for which we sponsor. So, you've heard about the donations a little bit. I had some notes on those, but I don't think we need to get into it because the school folks covered those. The only thing with donation to the high school for the wellness and strength and conditioning, I also think it's worth noting, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, that the Shrewsbury Boosters Club deserves a tremendous amount of support because they raised $60-plus thousand to go towards this initiative. So, kudos to them. We're just finishing the project on behalf of the students. Secondly, on the project with RISE, I mean, it's, I don't know, I get a little choked up when I talk about RISE. It's very sentimental to me. I think when Mel Chacharone and his family purchased the property of 557, they planted a seed for great things to happen in our community. And the RISE program was created and provides opportunities to a portion of our community that faces challenges and seeking vocational options, and they are making great strides in training these young adults to get out into the workforce and hopefully be independent in the long term. So I've had the experience firsthand since I retired in working at Polar Park, which is very, very accommodating to hiring those with both physical and intellectual disabilities. In fact, I think that might be Matthew. He's worked on a few shifts with me at the Vault Park. And so, you know, I've experienced firsthand the personal joy that comes from working with both intellectually and physically disabled individuals. The Worcester Red Sox were recently recognized and given an award for their leadership in hiring folks that may have otherwise been marginalized and not been able to find employment. I just wish I took this challenge on earlier in my life, not, you know, you don't really know until you get hands-on into it, and it's just so rewarding personally to see. I've been working with a young woman from Sutton. She was 21 when she started working with me, and she was so quiet as a mouse, and now she just can't wait to come to work, and she's vivacious and bubbly, and she's willing to take on all new tasks. She gives a sports report every day before a little group meeting. So, it's just a wonderful thing. I think the donation will provide a van for the participants to get transportation to their various jobs, but more so, it meets the mission of what RISE is all about, and I thank Meg and Christine and Jen at the RISE program for working with us and crafting. You know, we went through several iterations of this project, and I think we got it right, and the kids had a lot of input, and it was rewarding to see that the staff sought what they would want to do. And so, this isn't the only video I've seen. There were other, many other creative things that the kids put together. So, kudos to you guys for doing this. It's just a wonderful thing for the community. And also, serves a volunteer for the Town Center Association, and what this program and what RISE has brought to the center is exactly what we need in the center. It's an infusion as we slowly try to redevelop our small, little village in the center, and it's such a tremendous asset. And for anyone who's watching this, I would strongly recommend that you stop by and shop at the RISE store and see what these kids are doing. It's tremendous. And through our relationship during this process, I've got to see what the kids are doing behind the scenes, outside of the store in the back, and it's just incredible what you do. So, thank you. I can't wait to have the ice cream out and about. Hopefully, it will be, the cart will be at Dean Park and other municipal events, and maybe the local sports leagues will invite it to come to their games on weekends, and we, at the credit union, would certainly entertain and buy a tent for the students to be on a perfect corner to attract ice cream-selling on Route 9 at Lake Street. So, thank you. I can't wait till this takes off. Thank you.
I think "thank you" is first because it's a, this is a huge amount of money for a donation, and Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union always steps up, and this is not, this is, this is years and years and years of this business being a partner with us in our community, and from, as we say, Mike, you know, all the details, the money's great, and it's going to help us in other ways that we don't have to take money from somewhere else in the budget. So, that's, that's a good part from the budget side, but to me, the more important piece is the partnership with your organization for years of helping, and what they do in the community to help others. And when you mention RISE, you cannot go in there and not come out feeling good, no matter what it is. You know, and no matter what you do, you always feel good, and that's what we want to do as school community members. Let's do things that are right in this community. So, huge thank you for helping with that, and for the high school. It opened in 2002, and this is an area that needs to be redone, and we haven't been able to do it due to budgetary constraints. So, huge amount of money coming in to help us that we would have to take somewhere else in the budget, that we don't have a place to take it from. So, thank you very much, and again, I think it's, it's the partnership that we have as this community is extremely special, and Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union has done it for years. So, thank you.
Yeah, just thank you.
Can I have everybody to stand and give a clap to them?
No.
I just want to thank you, Michael, and Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, been outstanding partners for Shrewsbury Public Schools. I'll admit, when we look through the booklets and we see kind of what's on the agenda, I kept staring at that number, just such a generous donation. It's, I love the creativity behind how we're using it, too, with the, yeah, with the ice cream cart. I mean, I've been in retail like 22 years, I can see a lot of places where the foot traffic would just flow to, to that cart, not the least of which would be when-
Michael's idea.
Well, when the middle school lets out. I mean, you think about like the customers there, but I just, I love that we're extending these opportunities for the RISE students beyond even that building, right? I mean, it just, I think it's outstanding. So, thank you to Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, to Ms. Belcito, Dr. Lazzat, and Mr. Costa, certainly, and the boosters to complete that project that they have for the Fitness Center, just outstanding. Can't thank you enough, so, thank you very much.
I, too, want to echo our thanks. The credit union has done so much as a district, but also, having worked in the PTOs, they're very generous with the PTOs and the individual schools as well. And I think sometimes that, that happens quietly, and you might be on the back of a T-shirt or whatnot, but that, that is tremendous work that goes into our individual buildings and the district as a whole. This is a lot of money. I think it's no surprise that Maple and Maine and RISE are a fan favorite of all of us up here, and there's nothing that brings me more joy than walking into that building and talking to the, to the students and seeing how proud they are of themselves and the work that they're doing, and to be able to now take them out of the building and put them into the community, and exposing them to the community is such a huge thing for the community and for them. So, I appreciate that, and also, at the high school, by redoing the, the Fitness Center, that's not just helping our athletes, it's helping students that want to use it, who maybe don't have access to it at home, for staff that maybe stay later at school, that it's such a huge thing for them as well. So, truly, without this help, we would have to come up with that money somewhere else. So, thank you for, for stepping up and helping the district.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm totally chilled, so. It's not, it's not just the material or the financial thing, the entire, the skills that they'll, they'll acquire using their tools that are provided is significantly a boost over the, over their entire lifespan, so, right? And then, the community is now getting engaged with the ice cream truck. I'm looking forward to the ice cream truck anywhere, on the weekends or on the event time, but also, also to the improvements to the booster club. So, thank you for your generosity. That's where the community and the school district will collaborate and make things happen. So, thanks for your continuous generosity and support to the district.
Thank you, yes. Excuse me, pardon my allergies. Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union's been an outstanding partner for many, many years to the school district. Certainly, Jim DuPont, the CEO, has worked with us, and then, since Mr. Hale in one of his retirement gigs has joined them as their Community Relations Officer, it's been wonderful to work with him in this new capacity after he served the town so well in his other roles with the Town Manager's Office and Selco over, over time, and he's, he does a lot for the community as a resident. It's a wonderful partnership. You've mentioned it, but I just want to be very clear. This van was something we need for the program next year because there's more students, there's more things we need to provide to them. That was not going to be a choice, and we, because we had a signal early on from the credit union that they were going to be willing to fund that, that's $100,000 that we moved towards other things we could do with our budget for the coming year, and that's really a huge opportunity. And then, as far as the capital investment in the high school Fitness Center, something, again, we wouldn't have been able to do without the generosity of Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union. It's a, and it's an excellent partnership. It's, you know, supporting our students and both our student athletes and other students who use the Fitness Center in physical education class, but then, our students in the RISE program will benefit tremendously from this, and it's just a win for the community overall. So, again, I'm very grateful, thank you, and I certainly recommend that the school committee vote to approve both sponsorships this evening so we can move forward. So, thank you.
So, we need to take two motions. The first, that the committee vote to approve the sponsorship of $100,000 by Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union for the RISE program as presented, and authorize the Chair to sign the memorandum of understanding regarding the terms of the sponsorship. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Signify.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The second motion, that the committee vote to approve the sponsorship of $40,000 by Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union for the Shrewsbury High School Fitness Center as presented, and authorize the Chair to sign the memorandum of understanding regarding the terms of the sponsorship. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Costa, you can stay there. The next time-scheduled appointment is student, student recognition. We have two state champions. Two Shrewsbury High School indoor track and field athletes were recognized as state champions. Derek Schimer, class of 2025, is the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, MIAA Division One State Champion, MIAA All-State Champion, and New England Champion in the high jump, and was a New Balance National Competitor. He will be attending the University of Connecticut on a track and field full scholarship. Darius Gibbons, class of 2025, is the MIAA Division One State Champion and took sixth place at the MIAA All-State Champion, I'm sorry, in the All-State Championship in the shot put. He was also a New Balance National Competitor. He will be attending Assumption University on a football and track and field partial scholarship. Would you like to introduce our guest?
Thank you. Well, here's Derek Schimer and Darius Gibbons that you talked about, and along with our assistant coach, Lauren Silver, and our head coach, Ian Butterfield. Great opportunity today to be here, a product of, of that ice donation we received. These guys worked out a lot, a lot of times in the Fitness Center, but they're, these are one, some of our elite athletes at the high school in our senior class. The accomplishments they have made this year have just been extraordinary. Not often do you have two state champions in one, in one day. That was pretty impressive, and the atmosphere, and I'll let Coach Butterfield kind of talk about that a little bit, but the atmosphere that these guys brought from a state level was really a fun thing to watch. So, I'll let Coach Butterfield just kind of talk about their accomplishments, and then we'll let them kind of talk about their experience. Yeah?
Yes, just to sum it up as succinctly as possible, I think, as a mentor of mine says, it comes back to joy, and if you watch these two compete, Derek can just take over a room with a slow clap and a high jump, and the entire room just kind of stops and just watches him. He becomes a spectacle, and Darius, his smile is infectious outside the ring, but he gets inside there, and it's all business, and he can just flip that switch on and off, and they just enjoy what they're doing, and I think, you know, that's really what makes them special, being great teammates to each other. I think they both say that there are some teammates there that have pushed them and made them, you know, even more than maybe they would have been if they didn't have that support and that teammate pushing them. So, hopefully, we've given them a great, you know, support network, but they have been fantastic representatives of our, our community, our team, our school, their families, and it's been fun to watch.
I think I'd like to add is just that, you know, we're recognized, too, Coach Marshall kind of, our girls' coach tends to give them a little bit of motivation on the side with some of her comments, but also, like to recognize Tom McCabe, volunteer coach. It was shot put who was able to work with Darius and a few others, and another person we would probably want to give a little shout-out to is, who challenged Darius over the year was another senior named Josh Costello, who was also able to throw over 50 feet, and I, we looked in the- And, and I, we looked in the school history book, we've never had two shop winners throw fifty feet. So kept Darius going there throughout the season. But we'll turn it over to Derek and Darius to talk about their accomplishments.
Well, yeah. You know, it's fun to compete at such a high level and not only competing there, but like winning, you know? It's kind of like exhilarating, you know? I think one of the things I'm appreciative of is the, um, the competition, you know? Whether that's like on like teammates or other athletes. I think personally, that's really what pushes me to be great and prove myself as an athlete.
I have to agree with Derek. I definitely think having your teammates there to push you. And I personally believe in iron sharpens iron, so just having a guy there next to you, as Coach said, Josh Costello, are my teammates as well. Also stay on my toes, keep me on my toes, help me to throw better every single day and just working day in, day out to be the best I can be on the field. So I appreciate that.
Congratulations to both of you. And I, I had read about your accomplishments. It was in the paper. And I think for you, Derek, you, it was a six foot eleven inch jump. Your fourth in the country for this. I mean, that's huge. Very proud of that. And you gave up basketball to do this, and now you have a full scholarship. So I bet you're really happy. You gave up basketball for that. I bet your parents are too. So congratulations. I think it's just amazing to see our athletes do that. And for you, Darius, the article talked about your relationship with Josh. I thought that was such a nice way to look at how you improved yourself. And you were sixth the day that you won the state championship. Again, like just you, you pulled through everything to do really well, to represent yourselves, but also the, the school and our community. So congratulations to both of you. I think you have very bright futures going forward.
Thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations to you both. This is just a tremendous accomplishment. And congratulations to your coaches as well. Curious if you can give us a little context about like what your week looks like from a training perspective? Because I know there are hours and hours that go into this to get to the level that you're at. So it's a little kind of context on like what your training looks like on a given week.
So, uh, it's, uh, all right. So personally, I don't know about theories, but for me, as much work as I do, I think I put in like, what, like at least an hour or two every day?
Two hours every day.
Yeah. And it's all very intense. So one of the things I do compensate with that is rest a lot, you know? Whether that's with just, you know, like stretching or just like laying down. But yeah. It's a lot of pressure on my, um, body jumping with the, because you have to run pretty fast to jump high. And it's a lot of pressure. But yeah, the training aspect is very rigorous, you know? It's very technical because it's very, it's a very small margin for error when you're high jumping, you know? So yeah.
Oh, I'd say for me, so I do shot and disc. So now that we've moved into the spring season, so I usually split, split practice, do half and half. So shot first and like disc after, or like the next day I'll do disc and then shot. And then after practice, I'll typically go and get a lift, depending on what time, on what day the meet is. So if we had a meet on Wednesday, probably lift Monday, do some pre-meet stuff like drills, or shot and disc on Tuesday. And then prepare, just rest, no lift on, on Tuesday, and then prepare for the meet on Wednesday. So and now, but now that we're in comp season, I'd say all the meets are on Saturdays or Sundays on the weekend. So I'll usually lift Monday, Tuesday, take a break Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, do some pre-meet drills, like I said earlier, and then rest up and prepare for the meet on Saturday, Sunday.
Standing. Well, thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you. It is hard to be a student athlete in and of itself between balancing school and, and, and the athletics. But to be an athlete at the level that you are is amazing. And these are also, you've, you've built skills that are going to serve you so well in the future in terms of time management and communication and all those good things. But I imagine that this is probably, you probably have jobs in other clubs and other interests that on top of being a stellar athlete and good students, you probably are doing other things as well. Yes?
Yeah.
Yes? I don't know how you manage that because I can't manage like my day-to-day things. But how do you, how, how are you able to, between going to school, doing, um, you know, the athletics? How do you manage your day? Like, how do you keep yourself together?
I, I'd say just time management. As I said before, I usually go to practice, I usually start around three and then end around four thirty, five. And then I'm off to the gym to go get a lift and then maybe not back home till seven thirty, eight. So once all that's done, I got to obviously do my homework because I committed to my grades in school. So it's a long day and it's a hard process. But I think me keeping that dream, wanting to succeed and being the best I can be on the field keeps me in line. And I also, my mom as well, she'll definitely get on me if I don't make sure all that's in check. So definitely time management, just staying strict day by day, making sure that I can do everything I need to do.
As for myself, I think just, uh, keeping to like a, um, schedule, you know? Having a set day where I know what I'm doing definitely helps me. It does get tough at times, but I work through it. I think that's like the most important part is, uh, dealing with the problems and getting them fixed.
Congratulations. You guys are tremendous.
Yeah, thank you. So congratulations, I call all the comments made by my colleagues. So you did the best representative Shrewsbury at the top level, the state and also at national level. And you motivated a lot of other kids to take the path. So all the skills that you have acquired by managing sports and education, you can take them back and forth. Soft skills, time management, stress management, all those things you can take to your workplace, bring it back to sports. So it's, it's, it's worth the time invested. And also thank you for representing Shrewsbury to the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to extend my congratulations. I have two daughters who both are involved in the track, well, one graduated, one's involved in the track program currently. And it's just such a wonderful environment. It's such a supportive program. Everyone cheers for each other, roots each other on. And I just know, you know, talking with you today, it's just how supportive your teammates are of you and how helpful that is to, to, to both of you and how much fun, right? It, it all is when everyone's there cheering for each other. So just want to extend my congratulation as well. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. Certainly want to congratulate Darius and Derek on their great accomplishments. I want to thank their coaches, Coach Butterfield, Coach Silber here tonight, Coach McCabe who couldn't be here, Mr. Costa, you know, for providing the opportunities for our student athletes to excel. And everyone who supports them, certainly their families, there's a lot of support that comes from home in order to be able for them to, to take on these responsibilities and all the practice and competitions. And we really appreciate that you've represented Shrewsbury High School so well. Our tradition is that we recognize state champions. Well, in a future, some meetings in June, we have some state champions, some of our academic teams. But this evening we're recognizing, and I'm not sure what's going to happen with the spring season. We, we hope there could be a repeat. That would be excellent. But, uh, you know, we really want to recognize this. And at this point, if we could have Darius and Derek come up and receive, shake the committee's hands and receive a certificate, and now is a good time for a big round of applause for our state champion.
Eric, nice job. Congrats.
Well done. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Nice job. Congratulations.
Can we get one quick picture of?
Sure.
Derek's a little too tall.
Derek off to the side maybe.
Go to each side. Good job, boys.
Good job.
Derek, did you want to thank your mom?
Our next time scheduled appointment is the Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee report. Under the Massachusetts Education Reform Act, school districts are required to have a student advisory committee consisting of five high school students who are elected by the student body. The SAC is required to meet with the school committee during the year to review various issues of concern to the student body. This is the SAC's final presentation to the school committee this school year. Mr. Andrew Smith, Shrewsbury High School's social science teacher, serves as the faculty advisor to SAC. If you'd like to introduce the committee to us, please.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Strickland, and I have been honored to serve as chairperson for the Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee during the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five school year. Thank you for having us here tonight. My fellow members will now go and introduce themselves.
I'm Gaiety Ryer, junior.
I'm Emmanuel Yu, sophomore.
And Kalvon Sango.
All right. We'll now move into the section titled Student Life. During the end of the school year, students begin to conclude their academic journeys and prepare for new beginnings. The freshman class is currently anticipating the first final exams in the end of the school year. In order to support them, as well as other students, many honor societies have or are planning on ramping up their tutoring sessions.
Our school marked the beginning of spring break with the second annual spirit rally. To display the spirit of SHS, all four grades competed against each other in classic events like tug-of-war, dodgeball, and relay races, as well as more unique ones like human ringtones. After the fun and games, the graduating seniors were commemorated with a red carpet walk and flowers. With the conclusion of the spirit rally, the class cup was also awarded to the grade which was able to collect the most points from various school events throughout the year, in which the sophomore class of two thousand and twenty-seven was able to break the consistent senior win streak.
As the year comes to the close, juniors ready themselves for their potential college endeavors by meeting with their counselors and preparing for their college application process. In doing so, many have begun to visit colleges that pique their interest and offer their desired courses. Not only that, many aim to smoothen their college application process by organizing their brag sheets and getting their letter of, letters of recommendation out of the way. Alongside that, many have begun to pursue activities and internships in order to prioritize workforce involvement and then further learn and prepare themselves for their future.
This year's election season had a monumental voter turnout of eighty-seven percent for, for the total student body. And all four classes had a voter turnout of over eighty percent. Seventy-seven students ran for office in two thousand and twenty-five with only nine students running unopposed. The remaining sixty-eight were candidates for the remaining twenty-four positions, including class officers, student council, and SAC. I am happily, happy to report that Gaiety and I kept our position on SAC and look forward to being here next year. Emmanuel did as well. However, he's going to the Mass Academy of Math and Science at WPI and will be sorely missed.
Senior events. The countdown to graduation began with a senior breakfast earlier in April, wherein the class had a late breakfast in the commons with the help of faculty and parent volunteers. Looking forward to the following weeks, seniors are excited for commemoration in the senior faculty dinner, which will provide a nice closing to our high school careers. We also get to celebrate and have fun with a senior picnic at Dean Park and senior prom before graduation at the end of May.
Testing. As it is almost the end of the year, many students have to undergo testing of various forms, ranging from science MCAS testing for the freshmen, English and math MCAS testing for the sophomores, to the SAT and AP testing for many juniors and seniors. It's a very stressful time for students, and many are nervous for their upcoming tests. However, it is a necessary step in preparing for their futures.
Co-curriculars. Students continue to participate in the school community outside of the classroom.
Our school's robotics team had one of their best seasons in school history. Being ranked tenth in Massachusetts and top three hundreds in the world, they were, they were able to compete at world championships in Texas. Yee-haw! They were also able to perform while setting the highest score in the hopper field division.
DECA. One of our school's largest clubs, the DECA business team also went to their own international level competition in Orlando, Florida. Over the course of five days, the twenty-seven students who went on this trip were able to compete, enjoy Orlando and attractions like Disney Springs and Universal Studios. After competition, two of our own members were even able to qualify as international finalists in their own events, marking the end of a very fortunate competition season.
Science fair. As of recent, the state science fair occurred, where Shrewsbury High School had the highest number of international qualifiers of any school within our state. Two students from Shrewsbury High School are now attending the International Science and Engineering Fair, with each of them winning a first-place champion in either the local or state competition. As we speak, they are attending internationals in Ohio, which consists of eighteen hundred other researchers, engineers, and mathematicians from over eighty countries around the world, a testament to the level of achievement and hard workers within our school community.
World Language Awards Night. On April tenth, the annual World Language Awards Night took place in the SHS auditorium. Excellence in World Language Awards were given to select students, with fourteen students from the middle school receiving said awards. Ninety-three SHS students also earned the Seal of Bilinguality, an award given to those with excellent performances on both the English MCAS and the bilinguality exam. The night concluded with the yearly induction of the sophomore and junior class into the French, Latin, Chinese, and Spanish honor societies.
Classics Day. On April tenth, Shrewsbury Nat, Shrewsbury's National Latin Honor Society attended Classics Day at Holy Cross. There, we won first place in the upper-level curton, curtaumin tournament, a Latin trivia competition, as well as third place in the skip performances with our rendition of Ovid's Apollo and Daphne. Shrewsbury completed this trifecta when sophomore Sage Oxler Lust, Oxley Luster won second in the incredible competitive art contest.
Spring Concert. Two weeks ago, all of SHS's music groups performed their very last concerts of the year, from selections of pieces ranging from Harry Potter to classical waltzes. Our musical ensembles were able to play beautiful, exciting, and insightful music for the audience. As the year draws to a close, these music groups also held an awards night, recognizing the achievements of many SHS musicians and will now soon go on to host commemoration performances for the graduating class of two thousand and twenty-five.
Events at SHS. Shrewsbury High School and associated groups host a variety of events that enhance the student experience.
Safety Assembly. With upperclassmen getting their licenses, a safety assembly was held to encourage safe driving. Guest speaker, Mr. Butcher, spoke about his personal experience with car accidents, as well as the importance of driving safely. Hopefully, this will ensure that students are more conscientious in their driving habits.
Coffee House. The National Honor Society recently hosted our annual coffee house. We had forty incredible performances from soloists to groups, including our very own jazz band. Additionally, this event raised over fourteen hundred dollars, two hundred more than last year, through the entrance tickets and raffles. This event was a great way of celebrating the talent within our school, student body.
Asian Culture Night. On April twelfth, Asian Culture Club were able to host their Asian Culture Night with a total profit of one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars with two hundred, two hundred and three attendees. Their amazing performances ranging from a kazoo mashup, lion shoe blind dance, and Shrewsbury Dance Team Indian fusion dance. Towards the end of the night, everyone was able to enjoy a buffet provided by the Asian Culture Club. With all this, everybody, everybody enjoyed the immersed and diverse experience of Asian Culture Night.
Fashion Show. On May second, the Fashion Club hosted a fashion show in which various students were able to take part in modeling, designing, creating, and showcasing their outfits. Students followed the theme of making outfits based on different eras, ranging from the twentieth century to the two thousands. Through this event, the club raised around three hundred dollars for charity.
Class Formals. To mark the end of the year, the sophomore, junior, and senior classes are hosting the annual formals. The sophomore semi-formal took place in the commons and was attended by two hundred fifty people, raising six thousand three hundred dollars for the sophomore class. The juniors are hosting their prom at the AC Marriott Hotel in Worcester this upcoming Saturday. They've currently sold four hundred and three tickets. The senior prom will be hosted later in May at the same hotel and is expected to be attended by four hundred thirty-seven students and guests. Thank you for your support of the Student Advisory Committee. My two years on the Student Advisory Committee have been really incredible. Congratulations, Rajesh. They're, they're great. This upcoming fall, I will be attending George Washington University under the Public Policy Program in anticipation for a career in legislation or public administration. We will now be open for any questions.
Thank you. This is always really helpful for us because we hear it directly from the students. We're not there, so we don't have that. We may have students who have heard, but it's better to have you guys come and give us that direct feedback in things that are good or things that we need to do better or where funding may have to go. So thank you for everything and congratulations to you. Go. It's a great school to go to. You can have a great time in DC for sure.
Yeah, appreciate your presentations to us over the last year, or the school year, I should say. You're always well, well-prepared and really is helpful, as Ms. Frit said, to have you as the voice of the students and provide us this feedback. And I wish you all well. Look forward to seeing some of you back next year. So thank you.
Um, I too want to thank you all for always being here. You are the eyes and the ears for us up at the high school. And this takes a lot, and thank you for doing this. Community service is obviously something that we also feel strongly about. So having you in these roles at the high school is important. I look forward to seeing some of you back next year and to, Caroline, good luck off at college. I know that you, you do a lot. Caroline was actually part of the AI Study Committee. Caroline was actually part of the AI Study Committee as well, and she was able to put her expertise onto a lot there, so she's very actively engaged at the high school. So thank you for that, and you will do very well in whatever you choose to do.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a holistic overview of all the things that are happening, the comprehensive things that are happening at the high school, so it gives a very good understanding of all the top achievement achieving activities, robotics, DECA, Science Fair, and everything. I think we are so proud of all the students and their hard work, parents, and their support. So then, as a team, bringing that all that information and sharing it to us is really very meaningful for us to see the outcomes that come out from this. Thank you.
I'd also like to echo the comments of my colleagues. Thank you all very much for all your hard work this year. It's so important to hear directly from you, and you guys have delivered with really great reports each and every time you've presented, very thorough, and always very well-prepared to answer all our questions that we may throw at you. I'd also like to thank Mr. Smith, your advisor, for all of his work to get you guys ready each time that you guys present to us, so thank you very much. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. Thank you so much for all your reports over the course of the year. Tonight's report, I think, as members mentioned, it just shows what an incredibly busy place the high school is, from academics to co-curriculars to cultural events to safety events. There's a variety of things that we're trying to do to help shape our students' experiences, and we're so pleased that so many are taking advantage of all those different opportunities. I want to thank Mr. Smith for advising the SAC, and to all of you, thank you for the time you're taking to be part of this and to present multiple times a year to the school committee and the community, so people can get a sense of what's happening very much. Emmanuel, good luck at Mass Academy, we'll miss you, but it's a wonderful program there, so I'm sure you'll do extremely well. Kelvon and Gaitre, thank you for running again, we'll be happy to have you back next year. Noah Chonk couldn't be with us this evening, we'll talk about him in a moment in our next segment in the meeting, but appreciate his work, but then Caroline, and I remember Caroline being a student at Patton School many, many years ago, because many know that I happen to have in my home a member of the class of 2025, and Caroline has been extremely helpful, both in this role as the chair of the SAC and, as was mentioned, on the AI Study Committee, in addition to all of the other things that she's responsible for in her studies. I'm sure you'll do incredibly well at George Washington and whatever career you choose, I'm sure you'll be very successful, so thank you for your service, and we'll look forward to celebrating you coming up with all the different senior events. So, again, much appreciated. We do have certificates for all of you, so if you come up and shake the committee's hand, I'd love to recognize you and thank you again.
Is that a happy?
Let me start over this way, guys. Come on, we'll go this way.
Thank you so much for your work. Congratulations. Thank you so much, good luck next year. Thank you, we'll see you next year.
Thank you very much.
Caroline, congratulations.
Like a cowboy. See you next year.
Emmanuel, congratulations on next year. Hope I'm good to see you again. Congratulations. All right, why don't we do another photo op? I'm sure people want one, so it's a photo op evening here.
That's right.
Say tuition.
Hold those certificates up, guys, open those up. There you go.
Thank you.
How about a round of applause for our student advisors?
Okay, our next timed scheduled appointment is another student recognition of the Shrewsbury High School Senior Scholars. Each year, the school committee recognizes the ten senior students with the highest grade point averages in their class. A brief biological sketch of each is provided in our enclosed report. The senior scholars will be introduced in alphabetical order and will briefly comment on their school experience.
Thank you, and it's my privilege to be able to introduce each one of our senior scholars this evening, and I ask you bear with my voice during the allergy season, gets it. Our first senior scholar couldn't be with us this evening, Noah Chonk. I will read the... These were provided to us, these brief bio sketches. They're not everything that these very accomplished students have done, but there's some highlights that are provided by their school counselors, and I'll be able to read them. And then after I do, those who are present will be able to come up and make some brief remarks at each time. But let me start with Noah, who can't be here this evening, but I do want to recognize him. Noah's high school career is defined by his genuine love of learning and self-motivation. Every thing he's achieved in and out of the classroom is because he has chose to pursue it for himself. Noah has maintained one of the highest grade point averages in his class by embracing challenges and seeking help when needed, not because anyone pushed him, but because he believes in the value of understanding and growth. Whether tackling advanced coursework or stepping outside of his comfort zone, Noah's willingness to put in the work and his openness to learning have made him stand out. Noah has earned several prestigious honors throughout high school, reflecting both his academic excellence and athletic achievements. He received the Yale Book Award, the Superintendent's Award for Academic Excellence, and was recognized as a National Merit Scholarship finalist. At Boise State, he was elected lieutenant governor, demonstrating his leadership among hundreds of students, and he serves on the SHS Student Advisory Committee. In athletics, Noah was named a district and league All-Star in track and serves as captain of the varsity cross-country, indoor track, and outdoor track teams. He will be attending Dartmouth College in the fall, where he plans to study biochemistry. So although he couldn't be this evening, how about a round of applause, please, for Our next recipient is Ashi Gupta. Ashi's an exemplary student, whose dedication to learning, leadership, and resilience makes her stand out among her peers. Throughout her academic journey, she has embraced the most challenging curriculum, excelling in AP courses, and earning the highest possible score of five on the AP Biology, AP English Language, and AP Calculus BC exams. Her academic achievements have earned her membership in the National Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society, and National Math Honor Society, as well as recognition as a National Merit Commended Scholar. Ashi's passion for biology, especially genetics, has led her to pursue research opportunities, including publishing findings in biotrex and interning at UMass Chan Medical School. Beyond academics, she's a committed athlete, serving as the captain of her varsity track team and excelling in varsity soccer, where she earned all-state recognition. As a skilled debater, Ashi has consistently advanced to state championships, showcasing her exceptional communication and critical thinking abilities. Her ability to inspire others, her commitment to service, and her passion for travel further exemplify her character and dedication to making a positive impact on her community. She will be attending Johns Hopkins University in the fall and majoring in molecular and cellular biology. So with a round of applause, please welcome Ashi Gupta.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start off by thanking Dr. Sawyer and the school committee for inviting all of us here tonight and for all the work they've done to make my time at Shrewsbury High School as rewarding and fulfilling as it actually was. Next, I would like to thank my family, my mom, my dad, my younger sister, and younger brother, who instilled in me the values of hard work and perseverance from a young age. They have been my biggest cheerleaders in moments of success and my strongest support system during challenging times. None of this would be possible without them, so thank you once again. Throughout my time at SHS, I've been very lucky to meet countless faculty members, coaches, friends, and other individuals who have encouraged me to become the best version of myself I can possibly be. I want to especially recognize the exceptional math department at SHS, specifically Mr. Moran, Mrs. Pryor, Mr. Collins, and Mrs. Busso. Each and every one of them has gone above and beyond to support me and ensure I had every resources I needed to succeed in their classes. Their classrooms are places where collaboration is encouraged, and learning, even with the most difficult material, feels exciting and accessible. There was no such thing as a dumb question in these classes. Their passion for teaching created an environment I looked forward to being a part of every single day. Another person I would like to thank is my former soccer coach, Coach Kessy. Although he's no longer at Shrewsbury Public Schools, he made a lasting impact on me. He genuinely believed in my potential and consistently advocated for me, something I'll always be grateful for. One of the things I valued most, though, about my time at SHS is the opportunity to be a part of diverse, tight-knit communities, like my involvement in soccer, track, and speech and debate. These experiences have shaped me, not just academically, but personally, teaching me skills like leadership, discipline, and adaptability. Overall, it's been a true honor to be an SHS student, and I'm confident that my time at Shrewsbury will prepare me for anything I set my mind to in the future. Thank you for your time.
Our next scholar is Rachel Likenbaum. Rachel's unwavering work ethic and positive attitude have made her a standout student, demonstrating resilience in the face of every challenge. Fascinated by anatomy and evolution, she constantly seeks to apply her academic knowledge to real-world problems, exemplified by her internship with Rhythm Medical, where she analyzed and synthesized information for practical use. Beyond academics, Rachel co-led fundraising efforts that raised an impressive fifteen thousand dollars for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, showing her dedication to making a difference. Deeply proud of her heritage, Rachel serves as the president of the Asian Cultural Club, where she fosters community through a school-wide event celebrating Asian cultures. In her junior year, Rachel's passion for discovery led her and a group of like-minded peers to start a research club, where they conducted original experiments based on their investigations. Through every endeavor, Rachel's drive, resilience, and leadership shine brightly. Rachel will attend the University of California, Berkeley, and major in molecular and cellular biology. Please welcome Rachel up to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rachel Likenbaum, and I'm so happy to be joining you tonight to reflect on my Shrewsbury experience. First, I want to thank my family. To my parents, thank you for always nurturing my curiosity, offering unconditional support, and investing in my education while showing me what limits are and how to challenge them. And to my little sister, thank you for driving me crazy, dragging me out of my room, and most importantly, teaching me a lot of patience. Reflecting on my time in the Shrewsbury Public School system, I want to start at Floral Street School. I'd like to thank my second-grade teacher, Mrs. Coforio. A whole decade later, I still remember her smiley face memorabilia that filled her classroom and helped shape the positive outlook I have today. At Sherwood and Oak Middle School, I was able to deepen my learning experience and meet lifelong friends, especially in my foreign language class. I want to especially thank my Mandarin teacher, Meng Lashu, for igniting friendships and a passion that stayed with me through all six years of taking Chinese. At Shrewsbury High School, I've been lucky to learn from some truly remarkable teachers. To Mrs. Busso, thank you for being the coolest math teacher ever and showing me that it's possible to work hard, play hard. To Mrs. Keddie, thank you for opening my eyes to the world of academic literature and helping me grow into a more thoughtful thinker and writer. And to Mrs. Burnett, thank you for believing in me and always offering guidance and support. Additionally, over the past four years, I've been actively involved in the Asian Culture Club. From member to secretary to president, I've had the privilege of working with so many staff, teachers, and administrators. I'm especially grateful that Shrewsbury has supported events like Asian Culture Night, which you guys should definitely attend next year. Clubs like this are a testament to the diversity, inclusivity, and community spirit that make the school system so special. To everyone involved, Mr. Nguyen, Mr. Lane, Mr. Marcel Alfredo, and all the staff who chaperoned, offered a classroom, or lent a helping hand, thank you. To close, I want to return to a quote from W.E.B. Du Bois, who I was introduced to in Mrs. Keddie's class. "Children learn more from what you are than what you teach. Thank you all for being the kind of people who teach by example. I am endlessly grateful."
Our next scholar is Audrey Leo. Audrey's an extraordinary student, whose exceptional academic abilities are matched only by her remarkable sense of responsibility and leadership. Her inquisitive nature drives her to constantly seek deeper understanding and inspire those around her. As captain of the swim team and president of the Red Cross Club, Audrey leads by example, fostering teamwork, compassion, and resilience. Her dedication to excellence is evident in her impressive second-place finish at the Massachusetts Science Olympiad, a testament to her sharp intellect and tireless work ethic. Beyond academics and leadership, Audrey's artistic talents shine as a devoted member of the Worcester Youth Symphony Orchestra since eighth grade, where she has played viola. Audrey's steadfast commitment to personal and community growth makes her a truly exceptional individual and member of the class of 2025 at Shrewsbury High School. Audrey will attend McGill University and major in biochemistry.
Good evening, my name is Audrey Leo. Thank you all for having me tonight. First and foremost, I would like to thank my parents and my sister. None of what I have accomplished would be possible without your love and support. You've truly pushed me to become better, not just academically, but in character, too. Thank you for everything that you do. Now, I'd like to take you all through my journey through the Shrewsbury School System. It all started when I was about this tall, this tall, walking into the Old Beale School for my first day of kindergarten. I had on my Rapunzel backpack, and hiding behind my parents, I met Ms. Biadaj for the first time. After a great year filled with storytimes and pasta necklaces, I moved on up to Spring Street School. My experience there was truly wonderful, and I'm exceptionally grateful that what I remember most about my time there was learning to love learning. My teachers must have worked tirelessly to bring us classrooms that were full of life. Mrs. Chase, I still remember your beach-themed room. Thank you for all of the memories I had there. Going on to middle school, all of my middle school teachers were excellent as well. I want to thank all of my math and science teachers in particular, because this is the time I knew I wanted to pursue STEM in high school and college and beyond. You all inspired me with the passion for what you do, and I take that same passion with me to college. And finally, my high school teachers taught me much in the classroom, as well as non-academic lessons that I still value today. Mr. Brockie, you are one of the main reasons that I have fallen in love with biochemistry as I have. Ms. Keddie, Mr. Moran, Ms. Noel, the whole music department, where I found the magic of music through the orchestra ensembles, and all of my other wonderful teachers, I truly cannot recall a single classroom where I have not learned something that I carry with me today. Finally, I want to highlight the sport that I have loved for more than a decade. Swim has made me the person I am today. It has taught me dedication on those nights where the last thing I want to do is jump into freezing water. It has taught me what it feels like to win, what it feels like to lose, and come back better for it. I've learned how to make tough decisions, learned how to lead, so thank you to Coach Mulcahy, Coach Kimball, and Coach Oliver for really creating a fantastic team environment, where I am proud to wear SHS on my cap in big gold letters. And I say that because it is true. I'm immensely proud to represent Shrewsbury, no matter which way I do it. And that is because of the work of our teachers, our administration, and all of my fellow students in making this school something to be proud of.
Our next scholar is Sean O'Connor. Sean is an exceptionally talented and humble student who has consistently demonstrated a passion for languages and academic excellence. Despite having no prior exposure to French before middle school, Sean quickly mastered the language, testing into French Four Honors as a freshman and taking AP French as a tenth grader. His linguistic prowess expanded to Latin, which he started in eleventh grade with Latin Four Honors, again without prior Latin experience, and quickly became the top student within just a few months. Sean's dedication earned him a seal of bilinguality with distinction in both French and Latin. Additionally, he was honored with the Dartmouth Book Award and Superior Musicianship in Orchestra Award. Sean plays violin and piano, performs in the Joy of Music Program's Advanced String Quartet, and is a member of the Worcester Youth Symphony Orchestra. Outside the classroom, he tutors French with compassion and skill, working at Southgate Senior Living Center, and faithfully serves at Mass at St. Mary's every weekend. Outside of academics, Sean is a natural leader, serving as the president of the French National Honor Society and volunteering as a peer leader in a PE foundations class. Sean plans to pursue studies at the Université de Strasbourg in France in studying langue, culture, and civilisation étrangère et régionale. How did that do, Sean? That's a long time since I've studied French. A little rusty. Please welcome Sean O'Connor to the podium.
My shoes are loud. Hello, I'm Sean O'Connor. Thanks for having me today. I got to Shrewsbury Public Schools in fifth grade, and I've had nothing but great experience here, lots of great opportunities that I probably wouldn't have had elsewhere. I'd like to start off by thanking my parents. They raised me to be who I am. My dad is here to support me. My mother is out of town on a community service trip, so they really lead by example, which I'm really grateful for. And my brother and my friends, like Ben, Son Austin, to name a few, but really, everybody, your support and encouragement is really important to me. I'd like to thank all of the teachers that I've had in Shrewsbury Public Schools, but especially at the high school. Like I said, I've had nothing but great experiences, specifically in the French and Latin departments, as you've probably heard, especially Madame Plourd, Dr. Thompson, Mr. Bellimer, and Mrs. Busso, who's part of the math department. They've really shaped my worldview and informed my character and my desire to, you know, go abroad and learn by experiencing new things. And I want to thank Mrs. Young, my guidance counselor. She's been amazing. I mean, applying to schools in France is a very different process than the common application here, and so she's just been... and so she's just been completely flexible and meets everything I need. I'd like to thank Southgate, where I've been working like several days a week, every week, since pretty much the day I turned fifteen. I've learned responsibility, patience, and a strong work ethic there. I'd like to thank the St. Mary's Parish Community, specifically Father Mike, Father Jose, and Father Steve, making sure I'm not causing any trouble, God, because I'm here. And last but not least, I'd like to thank the employees down at Halal Guys in White City. They make really good beef gyro bowls or gyro bowls and falafels, the best cookies you've ever had, and they'll make it for you whenever you're hungry. So, thank you for having me tonight.
Our next scholar is Ladnejeet Panaghrahi. Ladnejeet is a standout scholar and leader whose resilience, intellectual curiosity, and service-oriented mindset define his high school journey. He has consistently earned high honor roll distinction and academic excellence awards in mathematics, science, and computer science, while balancing a demanding course load that included four AP classes in his junior year. As president of the Science Fair Club, he guided members to regional successes and earned top honors himself for an innovative artificial intelligence project. As co-captain of the math team in Math Olympiad, he led his team to qualify for state-level competitions and was individually recognized with top scores in several regional math contests. Ladnejeet also contributed to the robotics team's advancement to the VEX Robotics Regional semifinals and further demonstrated his technical prowess by designing an educational app that earned distinction in the Congressional App Challenge. Beyond academics, he founded the Student Leadership Outreach Club to foster mentorship and peer support, and volunteers regularly at Beal Elementary School and the Russian School of Math. A key member of the astronomy club, Ladnejeet thrives on exploring new ideas, supporting his peers, and leaving a meaningful impact on his school and community. Ladnejeet plans to attend the University of California, Berkeley to study computer science. Please welcome Ladnejeet up to the podium.
Good evening. I want to begin by thanking Dr. Sawyer and the school committee for organizing this event and for all that they do for Shrewsbury. I'm honored and grateful to be here today. However, I would like to emphasize that this achievement wasn't solely my own. I would not be here today if it was not for the support of my family, as well as the amazing faculty and opportunities at Shrewsbury High School. I wanted to specifically thank my sister, who has shown me the most support and been my friend over the last four years. Additionally, I wanted to shout out three members of the SHS faculty. First, I wanted to say a big thank you to Mrs. Busso, who was my freshman-year math teacher and my junior-year statistics teacher. Throughout my four years, beyond being a teacher, Mrs. Busso has looked out for me, given me advice, and has never failed to make my day by sharing interesting stories of her life. I also want to express my appreciation for Mrs. Phillips, who was my chemistry teacher and mentor during the Research Methods program and even after. She helped me explore and discover my passions, guiding me step by step through the scientific process. Mrs. Phillips also played a huge part in me being able to present my work at science fairs during my sophomore, junior, and early senior year. Finally, I want to thank Mr. Collins for not only being my calculus and math modeling teacher, but for being my math team coach. Mr. Collins never failed to help me understand complex topics and to provide an inclusive environment where everyone can enjoy learning. Once again, I would like to express my gratitude to the school committee, Dr. Sawyer, and those who have stood by me during my journey. I'm forever indebted to you. Thank you.
Our next scholar is Alina Shaikh. Alina is an academically exceptional and well-rounded student. Known for her intellectual versatility, Alina has excelled in both STEM and the humanities, earning the AP Scholar Award and the Massachusetts State Seal of Bili Literacy. She thrives in analytical settings, especially in AP Statistics, and brings a unique blend of problem-solving and communication skills to every challenge. Alina has demonstrated remarkable leadership as a co-founder of the Bio Builders Club, a team leader on the robotics team, where she overcame technical challenges with creativity and resilience, and president of the Psychology Club, where she fostered a vibrant collaborative environment. Her deep commitment to service is evident in her four years as a Sunday School teacher for immigrant and underprivileged children and her long-term tutoring at the Kumon Math and Reading Center. Described by teachers as mature, organized, and driven, Alina is a thoughtful leader with a global mindset who is poised to thrive in college and beyond. She will be attending Tufts University in the fall. Please welcome Alina to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start by thanking my parents and my two little brothers for being here tonight and supporting me. I would also like to shout out some of the teachers that have really supported me during my high school career. Mr. Collins, my math modeling teacher, thank you for caring about my well-being and future and making every class fun. Ms. Noel, my stats teacher, thank you for always being there to answer my questions, even though I repeatedly interrupted your lunch period to do so. Dr. Duggan, my bio teacher and club advisor, thank you for always going out of your way for me and just being an amazing teacher to work with. Mrs. Burnett, my sophomore-year English teacher, thank you for your constant enthusiasm, not only with celebrating my accomplishments, but also with your passionate and energetic teaching. I would also like to briefly acknowledge some of the teachers I had in middle school, including Mr. Donahue, Ms. O'Neil, Ms. Meany, and Mr. Amder. I may not remember anything you taught me in class, but I do remember that you always made me feel happy, motivated, and confident about my future. There are a lot of other teachers that I love that I don't have time to mention. So, for all of those, I just want to say thank you for everything. You have had more of an impact on me than you could ever imagine, and I'm sure all your other former students feel the same. I'd also like to acknowledge the Shrewsbury Robotics Program, which I have been involved in since middle school. Robotics has given me the amazing experience of working with some really inspiring and creative people. I've learned so much through this program and have also made a lot of lifelong friends. These are just a couple of people and activities that have impacted my academic journey and led me to where I am today. I appreciate you all for your continuous support, and thank you for your time.
Our next scholar is Shriya Siva Ramakrishna. Shriya is an exceptional student whose academic excellence, intellectual curiosity, and leadership have made her a standout at Shrewsbury High School. Shriya pursued an internship with UMass Chan Immigration Services by proactively reaching out to a speaker she admired, an initiative that led her to managing social media and updating the website, stepping into a leadership role, excuse me, stepping into a leadership role that required both creativity and problem solving. Known for her meticulous organization, Shriya supports her peers with study guides and test preparation, and she balances a demanding academic schedule with meaningful community involvement. As co-manager of the Shrewsbury High Concession Stand, she helps raise funds for Shrewsbury High School, and her commitment to service extends to playing viola in the Worcester Youth Symphony Orchestra and working as a library page. Shriya's blend of academic talent, creativity, and civic mindedness sets her apart, and she will bring these outstanding qualities to American University in the fall, where she plans to study political science. Please welcome Shriya to the podium.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all for having me tonight. My name is Shriya Siva, and I'm incredibly grateful to be here today. I would like to first of all, thank my family, my mom, my dad, and my brother for getting me through these past four years. You guys have supported me, helped me through college applications and AP tests, and I am extremely grateful. So, thanks for always listening to my presentations the night before and for staying up with me as I studied until late hours. I would also like to thank my friends, because without you guys, high school would not have been as enjoyable as it was. Thanks for always being there for me, whether it's through study sessions or running out for a sweet treat together. And I would not be here today without the absolutely wonderful teachers I have had throughout my high school career. You all made it so exciting to come to school, made me excited for your classes, and I will forever be grateful for everything you do to help your students. All of the teachers I've had clearly care about us, and it really makes a difference as you guys push us to do our very best. To Mr. Brown and Mr. Burton in particular, my AP Push and AP Comparative Government teachers, thank you for helping me explore my passions and decide what I want to do with the rest of my life. Your classes have been my absolute favorites these past years, so thank you for giving me something to look forward to every day. Finally, thank you to those in the Shrewsbury community who have helped me along the way. Thank you to Ms. Priya Ruthnam and Ms. Sonia Droder of the Shrewsbury Public Library, as I have truly enjoyed working with you and the entire library community. Thank you to Ms. Melissa Share, director of my immigration law internship at the UMass Chan Medical School, someone I only met through one of the school's career programs. The programs at SHS have truly helped me grow as a learner, both inside and outside the classroom, and I feel very prepared for the real world. Congratulations to all the graduates. As we head off to college, or whatever our future plans may be, I for one can confidently say that while high school has not been easy, I've treasured each and every experience. Thank you.
Our next scholar is Dia Vijaya Kumar. Dia is a remarkable student, shown by her academic achievements, leadership skills, and dedication to community service over the past four years. She's challenged herself in various honors and AP-level courses. She's also demonstrated her passion for biology through her participation in a live research project at UMass Chan Medical School. Dia has received numerous academic accolades, including a perfect score on the National Latin Exam and the Cum Honorum Maxim Egrigio Award. Her SHS capstone exhibition focused on the intersection of technology and science, reflecting her intellectual curiosity and interdisciplinary approach to learning. Dia has also spent countless hours as president of the Badminton Club, coordinating her own nonprofit called STEM Love, aimed at raising funds to support underprivileged refugee children through education, and a dedicated Bara Anatayam dance, where she has performed in numerous fundraising events using her artistic talent to contribute to meaningful causes. Dia's determination and resilience are reflected in her motto, "Today's struggle is tomorrow's strength." Dia will be attending the University of Massachusetts Emerson the Fall and plans on majoring in biology on a pre-med track. Please welcome Dia to the podium.
Hello. Thank you for having me here today. I would like to first thank my family, especially my mom and dad, for all their support in everything I do and encouraging me to do my best and put my full effort. I would also like to thank my sister, who has always been there to help me with my projects and to drive me out of my room and to explore the world outside and to go outside and play with her. When I first came into high school, it wasn't just a transition from middle school. It was a transition from being in quarantine and on Zoom to being back in person with masks and social distancing. Middle school didn't demand much of me. All I really had to do was show up on Zoom and fill out worksheets. But I quickly realized that high school was a whole different experience. Just attending class and completing assignments wasn't enough anymore. The expectations were higher, and the workload was much harder, which made the transition that much harder. However, over the years, I learned how to manage my time better. I figured out how to balance schoolwork and extracurriculars. I also knew that there were teachers that I could rely on if I ever needed support. I would like to thank Dr. Duggan, who inspired my passion in biology by teaching us about her experiences as a researcher in Harvard Medical School. I would also like to thank Mr. Moran. He really pushed me to do my best and put my full effort in everything I did. His daily quotes were more than just words. They were reminders to stay motivated, focused, both in honors pre calc and in life beyond the classroom. Looking back, my high school experience has helped me shape who I am, someone who knows how to adapt, work hard, and grow through challenges. Thank you for everyone here today.
And our final scholar this evening is Fiona Wang. Fiona has spent the last four years demonstrating her dedication, intellectual curiosity, and leadership abilities at SHS. She's a well-rounded student who stands out among her peers for her academic excellence, commitment to extracurriculars, and personal character. Fiona was the recipient of the Harvard Book Award, Excellence in Science Award in both 2022 and 2023, and also received an AP Scholar Award. She has mastered curriculum in various AP-level courses, as well as a course at Worcester State University during her junior year. Fiona has been a competitive swimmer for the past ten years, achieving significant recognition at the national level, including being a finalist at the Senior International Swimming Club in 2023 and a qualifier for the USA Swimming Futures Championships. She is the co-president of the Girls Who Code Club, showing her dedication to empowering young women in STEM. Fiona is also a member of the Varsity Math Team, National Honor Society, Peer Mentoring Program at SHS, and the Sherwood Middle School Summer Enrichment Program. She takes time out to volunteer as a swim instructor for adults at the YMCA and also completed a summer internship at Mass Hire as a research analyst, specifically working within healthcare IT programs. Fiona is an exceptional student with the academic capabilities, leadership skills, and personal character to succeed. She'll be attending the University of California, Berkeley in the fall, where she'll be majoring in chemical engineering. Please welcome Fiona to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. I want to first start off by thanking the school committee for having us here this evening. You all have truly done a wonderful job making the Shrewsbury Schools such an enriching and welcoming place to learn and grow. Being in the Shrewsbury Public School System for almost a decade has been such a memorable experience. From Beal to SHS, I believe the educators in our district truly set apart our schools from others. I am eternally grateful for all of my teachers over the past few years. I especially want to thank some of the countless teachers in our community who have made my experience so meaningful and rewarding here at SHS. Thank you to Mrs. Moynihan for her enthusiasm towards teaching and for inspiring her students with her passion for chemistry. Thank you to Mrs. Pryor, my math teacher, for the last two years for her dedication and remarkable teaching style. She's a teacher who not only excels at being an educator, but also is a kind and caring person. I'd also like to recognize the Latin Department and specifically Dr. Thompson for her compassion and empathy towards her students, as learning Latin for the past four years at SHS has allowed me to meet some of my closest friends. The teachers at SHS and within our district are not only phenomenal at inspiring their students on an academic level, but also on a personal one, by encouraging us all to be our best selves inside and outside of the classroom. I would also not be here without the help of my friends and family. Thank you to my mom, dad, and sister, who have always supported me and encouraged me to aim high and pursue my goals. Once again, a huge thank you to Dr. Sawyer and the school committee for having us here this evening. I'm so grateful that I had the opportunity to be a student at Shrewsbury and be surrounded by such an exceptional and supportive community.
Congratulations to all the students. It's such an achievement for you to go through school. And when you're talking about your achievements, you're all very well-rounded. It's not just study. It's not just academics. You're multifaceted. You're working. You're doing all kinds of other things. That shows commitment not only to yourselves and broadening what you're learning, but also that academic piece that as school committee members is what we support. So, this is always a really gratifying night for us, just to see how well our students are doing. So, congratulations to all the students and all their families. You don't do it alone. Everybody does it together, but I think having families and the community that supports is always a huge piece to having success in our community. So, thank you.
Yeah, congratulations on not only the accomplishments academically, but just how you balance everything. You know, some of the descriptions of the involvement, not only academic world, but just outside of classroom, co-curriculars, the community service, truly making my head spin, to be honest with you. And I just can't commend you enough for all that you get involved with and certainly appreciate, you know, the gratitude that you show to your teachers and just giving specific examples of what the clubs and the activities have meant to your journey here at Shrewsbury Public Schools. So, really appreciate that. Also appreciate your families as well. I've said it many times, it takes a village to achieve this level of success. So, appreciate your families and a big thank you to our teachers and staff that really supported your journey to this point. So, thank you so much and best of luck. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I love when students come to visit us. It is one thing. We get so many presentations that come to us, and we're looking at data, and we're trying to figure out what is best for the district, and does this decision make sense? But when the students come, that, and I use this, the proof is in the pudding, right? Like, you are the reason why we sit here and we make the decisions that we do. You are the reason why the teachers and the staff show up every day and they put in the work that they do. You recognized a variety of teachers. There are many different names that got thrown in there, but it was teachers. It's the staff. There was advisors, coaches. You talked about academics, clubs, athletics. You were so well-rounded. And you've touched so many aspects of Shrewsbury High School, the middle school, the elementary schools, jobs. That is going to serve you so well, going That is going to serve you so well going forward. But that truly, when we hear you giving thanks to all of these teachers and staff that make a difference, that means something to us. Because again, we know we have great staff, we know we have great programs, and this is why we invest where we do. And I'm glad that you recognize that. And these are all things that when you go off to college, college is going to seem so easy for you because you really have had this like well-rounded experience at Shrewsbury. So, good luck. You will all do fantastic. And I hope to hear big things from each one of you in a few years from now.
Yeah, I echo all the comments from my colleagues. And also, looking at all the accomplishments, I can't imagine how many hours you have worked every day to get all these things, to accomplish all these things. It's unfathomable for me at least. But congratulations, this is what we always strive for as a society, as a community, as a school district. So your success is our success. So you made us proud, not just the school district, but an entire community, Shrewsbury community itself. So we are very proud of you, of all these accomplishments and the character that you have built that will stay with you over the rest of your life. So do come back, do support the community when you're in different positions. And we wish you all the best from here onwards.
I just want to echo my colleague's comments. Congratulations to all of you. We're just so proud of you all. This is one of our favorite nights of the year. We'd love to hear from you and to hear about all of the different wonderful things that you've done over the course of your careers as students here in Shrewsbury, the Shrewsbury Public Schools. And I love how you all spoke about how teachers not only academically pushed you, but how they've shaped your character, how they've, you know, pushed you to become better versions of yourself. And it's just, you know, we're just, we're obviously so proud of our staff as well, but just how they've, you know, there's tremendous impact that they've had on you. So thank you all and congratulations to your families as well. This is a big night for you as well. All the hard work, the late hours, the chauffeuring around to these different activities. I know you're all very proud and well deserved. So thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. Again, just remarkable accomplishments. But certainly I love hearing from your counselors about your character, about the contributions you've made to your school community, to the community at large. We're very proud of you and we know that hearing all the different things that helped you along the way gives us confidence that you're well-prepared for your futures, whether that's higher education next and whatever else is after that. We know that you'll represent your families, who we also thank for their support, and yourselves well in whatever you choose to pursue. So with that, we do have a token of appreciation. We have a pen and pencil set that's inscribed to give you as a gift. We'd ask that each of you come up and shake the committee's hands, receive your gift, and then we'll do another photo op in front here so your parents can get some pictures. And then you'll be able to head on your way. So again, how about one more round of applause for our final scholar?
Congratulations.
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 Great job.
Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations, well done.
Congratulations.
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 Let's see here, we got, Alina, there you go. Congratulations, well done. Congratulations, well done. Let's see, we got Dia, congratulations, well done. And Shriya, congratulations, well done. Rats, Rachel, congratulations, well done. All right. Maybe we're going to have some on this side and some, you guys are smart enough to arrange yourselves. And we'll do a photo. Lyne Ajit, how about you get on the end? So you're not, oh, there we go.
You're good.
You're good.
All right, congratulations, everyone.
So our next timed scheduled appointment is a report on the Teacher Diversification Project. The Teacher Diversification Project was formed in 2021-2022 school year. And each year, the team reports formally to the school committee on the group's accomplishments for that academic year. We have an enclosed report in our packets that details the work that's been done by the Teacher Diversification Project team on each of the 2024-2025 action steps from the strategic priorities for the district for the years 2023 to 2027. Ms. Malone will be available to discuss the report and answer questions from the committee. If you'd like to introduce Ms. Malone, who you have with you tonight?
Yes. So hi, I'm Barb Malone, the Executive Director of HR. And to my right, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Christina Manos, the Director for English Language Education.
Serenity Sullivan-Jakes, English Language Teacher at Shrewsbury High School.
Kristin Minnie, I'm one of the Adjustment Counselors at Oak.
Pam Poitras, 5A Science Coordinator.
So our agenda tonight, we have many other team members on our team and they all had family commitments this evening, so we're representing the team. So I'm going to show you who else is on the team, the action steps that we took towards the strategic plan for the 24-25 school year. We have some data, which I'll go through fairly quickly in summary, and then we'll take questions for you. So for some of you, this is a repeat. The Teacher Diversification Project is a group of individuals who work together on ways to improve our educator diversity. And as we always say, because all students benefit from diverse perspectives and when they see themselves in their educators. So this was year four of the project. And the action goals are set within the strategic plan for the district. So the school committee approved these. And the community was part of developing them at the beginning of the year. So here are our team members. As you can see, there's many more than us. One has her sister moving in next door to us. A couple have kid things tonight, but we appreciate all the work. This has been a really active team this year. And every single person on that list has made contributions, significant contributions to the team. So these were the four action steps that the school committee approved. And we're going to go through each of them in order. So first up, Christina Manos is going to talk about what her team, which included Pam Poitras, did with the district leadership team this year.
Thank you for having us tonight. So I had the dubious honor to be the only person left standing from my subcommittee last year, but I was thrilled when Pam Poitras and Rob Dunn from the Middle School Curriculum Coordinators Team joined me in our work. And we had the privilege of presenting at the district leadership team and bringing them small bits of professional development around our hiring process. Last year, you might remember, we did a lot of work just around examining our personal bias and how our own experiences might impact the decisions we're making at the hiring level. This year, we specifically focused on the revised and very wonderful new Guide to Talent Acquisition, which is a reimagining of the guidance that is shared with all district leaders around the hiring that we do. So we broke that work across three sessions. The very first one, we really focused on the screening process. You have all these exciting candidates in school spring. You're reading their applications, you're making phone calls and everything. And how are we doing that equitably? How are we checking our own bias as we're talking to people? How are we considering how things like where somebody went to school or their accent or their first language might impact the subconscious decisions we're making and about who we're letting in for the next step of the process and who we're not? Our second session looked at getting ready for the interview. How are you putting together your interview committee? Do you have diverse representation on your interview team? Or are you choosing people that you think are all going to agree with you? What are the questions you're planning to ask? And again, how are you setting up that experience to make sure that you're checking your bias, that you're giving candidates an equitable approach and bringing them together? The last step in going through the Guide to Talent Acquisition was thinking about how we create welcoming procedures and also equitable procedures when we bring candidates in, whether it's for the first in-person interview or when we invite finalists back to come in for a demo lesson or a performance task and to meet additional teams of people. And again, we really kept our focus on our own bias and also equity for candidates so that we're making sure that everybody gets a fair chance when they're coming through. The final presentation that we did with DLT, excuse me, was actually to present the work from another subcommittee, which you'll hear more about in a moment. Action Step Two focused on a survey to see what the interest in our paraeducator staff is in gaining a professional licensure to advance to be professional educators. Because we think that could be an important pipeline to improving diversity in our district. And so I don't want to steal their thunder and talk about the great work they did, but we had the fun as the DLT reps on our committee of sharing that data with other district team leaders and also bringing out the charge of, okay, here's the data. What is our role as district leaders in helping advancing that? How can we be a part, even if it's a small part, to making this happen? Thank you.
Kristin, you're up.
Okay. Our role was to survey the paraeducators in our district to see what their interest was in furthering their education. Were there things that the district could do to help support their forward movement in their own career goals? So one of the pieces that I'm very grateful for was that this year, we added two paraprofessionals to our committee to help us study this work. Alekia Tannaroo and Gioti Pulati were two paraeducators that joined our team. And one of the things that was really important, besides their interest in just sort of wanting to be more involved in this work, was Gioti in particular has been interested in moving forward in her career. She has been a long-term sub in Sherwood Middle School. And she gave us a really, you know, they both gave us really interesting perspectives on their experience and some of the obstacles that they were facing in terms of moving forward. And we used, we took their input and used it and it helped us to craft our questions, in some cases, change the questions a little bit to help address, you know, to really get the information that we were looking for. So I felt really grateful that the district allowed us to add people to our committee this year that would help support the work. We had 98 staff participate in the survey. So we surveyed instructional assistants, ABA techs, child-specific aides, media center specialists, tutors, job coaches, substitutes. And I think there were, there were 312.
Mm-hmm, so it's about a third.
Paras in our district, so it's a little over a third of this particular cohort of people that responded to our survey. So we feel like a third was probably a good number. We found some very interesting things. We actually, we have a very highly educated staff in our, in our community. 82.4% hold an associate's degree or higher, and 77.6% of our respondents expressed some interest in moving forward in a teaching career. So that was really exciting because there aren't a lot of people signing up to be teachers. So the fact that we have, you know, this many people that were interested, I thought was really wonderful. So, I mean, as you can see, we broke it out a little bit by level of degree. So 21.6% have a master's degree or higher already on staff. And then 49% had at least a bachelor's degree. So we thought that was really important. And out of those 98 responses, there were 44.9% were definitely interested in furthering their teaching career and 32.7% were, wanted to know more information, which I find encouraging. So we have a pretty large cohort that's interested in moving forward.
When we analyzed the barriers to going from par to professional teacher, obviously, time and money were the highest responses. And then when we dug into that data a little bit, what we found out was both a lack of really information, good information that they were getting about, like, what does this, what does this really look like? How long is it going to take me? I think the MTEL was a big sort of target word for, you know, a lot of teachers just wanted, they felt like that was a barrier. Even if they had taken, you know, passed multiple exams, that seemed like navigating that system through the DOE was either something that they didn't know enough about or they were just confused about the steps. And I think that came through a lot of like our person-to-person conversations or like the open response. So what we sort of got to the, to breaking it down into some, some suggestions for the future going forward, we would potentially put some MTEL prep courses forward for a summer institute course, which runs for the week, when school, the week after school gets out in June. Those are pretty popular. It's a good place to kind of put that in and give educators access. And it's just very clear, good information. We also talked about like flexible work options, job sharing, stuff like that, just giving educators an ability to be able to complete a lot of those requirements, like hourly requirements that they could do on the job and then also be able to pass the exam. Reducing costs obviously is going to help our cause in any way we can. So we, you know, put forward a couple of suggestions about reducing costs and using some of the yearly sort of money that we get to put towards, to put towards credits. That would, could maybe be some, there's some flexibility there.
And I'd like to add to that, that the school committee knows that we did, that the school committee put in additional tuition reimbursement for paraeducators in the new contract that started with this year. And so I think that that will really address that concern. And, you know, we've had a few more pursuing using that than in the past. So thank you for putting that in the contract because I think that that will address that issue for a lot of paraeducators. So that was actually action step number three, but it was a nice segue from Christina's part. Now we'll go back to the alternatives to the college and university job fair model. And we looked initially at the Stone Hill Regional Center for Emergency Educators. As you might remember, during the COVID crisis, emergency licenses were granted to people and they didn't have to go through all the hoops for regular licensure. And then this particular program would help folks move from that emergency licensure to an initial licensure. So we did share that information with our staff to help teachers or paras who had obtained emergency licensure during the emergency. We established a relationship with Worcester State University. One of the things that's interesting to them is that they do almost all of their pre-practicums with Worcester Public Schools and they wanted to be able to give their students a different experience. And so this is really ripe for exploration next year. We also need to pursue, we also came to the conclusion that Pittsburgh State University and Mount Holyoke College were both places where we could pursue similar type relationships and we might be able to get a more diverse group of educators. Also, across the course of this year, para-to-teacher programs were very popular. They were developed at colleges and universities across Commonwealth. And we shared three of these programs with our staff over the course of the year so that they would know that even though we didn't have our on-campus, say, MTEL prep or information about licensure complete, that there was something that they could pursue from local universities and colleges. Now we'll go back over here. So the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program, this was something that was brought forward by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And we attended two sessions to find out more about it. And then we had two meetings. And then we had two meetings with Quinsig, because they had the local version of the program. Desi was working with specific colleges. And we wound up actually sharing the information with Dr. Lizotte for career development for our high school students. So while it didn't quite work for our purposes, it was something where we were able to turn the information over and it was able to be utilized for a different program. State-provided data, the state always provides data. This is the exact same slide that we've used for at least a couple of years now. Our students are becoming increasingly diversified, and our educators are less diverse than our students. And we get that from a couple of pieces of data. These, this is data from the Department Student Enrollment. You can see that Black or African-American remained steady in the district. Asian population increased a little bit. Hispanic or Latino increased. Native Americans stayed the same. White dropped a bit. Multirace non-Hispanic increased. So we continue to be a little more diverse every year than we were the year before. And this is our staff, and this is all staff, not just teachers, not just paraeducators. But it shows compared to the state what we have. So for example, the state, 5.1% of educators are, self-describe themselves as Black or African-American. That's 1.4% of our district total. Conversely, when you look at the Asian population, that's 2.2% of the state's total of educators. Here in Shrewsbury, that's 6.4% of our professional educators. Hispanic or Latino, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a successive slide, the state total is again higher than, than our total. And we're essentially the same as the state in terms of white educators. Percentages, the overall percentages of our group, and you've seen this in previous slides, previous years, has remained largely the same, because in order to move the large numbers of educators we have here, we would need to have incremental improvement across many, many years. However, we continue to hire diverse educators across the last four years of this project at a higher rate than our general workforce. And eventually, that's going to result in really changing the needle overall. Just quickly, this shows us 2025, this is our total professional educators. White, 95.99%, but, you know, before this project started, that was over 97%. So you're starting to see that change a little bit. And we're certainly seeing a more increase in Asian professional teachers, many of whom actually were teachers in their country of origin. And, you know, we work pretty closely with a handful, a handful of people, about 14, across, across the last few years to, to really help them get the licensure that they need. And this was for the previous year. So I think you can see that, again, it's just dropping a little bit in the white category. And that's what we want to see, that change over time, just so that we can come closer to the diverse workforce that represents our students. So if you look over the last, past four school years, then you can see that the Asian group is at 5.83%, and white is at 91.92%. And this number is very interesting here, the Hispanic or Latino group, because that is an area where we want to increase, and we're starting to see an increase in that area. And again, because we're seeing that group increase within our student population. For paraeducators, what we've noticed is we have more employees in the Hispanic or Latino category. Again, that's going to help us if we can move some of those folks into teaching roles. That will be an area of focus that could really help us shift some of these numbers. So this is what we have right now, 7.38% of our paraeducators are Hispanic, 15.06% are Asian. And as you go through, 72% are white. And so when you really look at these numbers, you realize that it has been changing for some time. And if you couple this with the survey data from the paraeducators, you really see that if we can get those, you know, 45, 50, 60 people who showed an interest, that would make a dramatic difference going from paraeducator to teacher over time. And then this was the previous year. So paraeducators hired over the past four years. You see, again, that it's a more diverse group. And this, I should mention that when, on these slides where we say it's four years, that's including turnover. So in other words, if the person is not with us, they are not counted. So they've been, they have been hired a previous year, but we're really only counting the people who stayed. So if you're including that, then these numbers even look a little bit better. And then the daily substitute population has a less diverse population than last year. But I think that's due to a combination of lack of new daily substitutes and turnover. So that'll be an area for focus next year, because that's the real entry-level position. So just quickly, those slides. And, and you can see that, again, that, you know, white across the last four years, it's less than 50%. So that's of interest. But it's also the category where 35% of people don't provide their information. So as we go through our action steps, one was the assess and determine next steps for professional development for the district leadership team with the Guide to Talent Acquisition. We feel that action step was completed by two of these individuals, plus Rob Dunn this year. The alternate approaches to college and university recruiting in lieu of the job fair model, which didn't work as well the previous year. We feel like that was only partially completed because we can develop more relationships in the future. And then the action step was completed about surveying the paraeducators. And finally, exploring the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program. So next steps for the 25, 26 goals will be finalized in the fall of 2025, and hopefully the team will continue. So we are open to questions.
Colleagues?
I just want to thank you for the paraeducator piece, because I know during negotiations with Mr. Wensky and Ms. Malone, there was a lot of concern about that, because we have very educated paraeducators. And for whatever reason, you know, they've chosen this path for now, but looking, how do we get these people who are already in our district to that next level? I think it's going to be a great way to keep talent here and help those who want to pursue that professional certification to get there. So I'm really happy to see that. And I do have a question on onboarding. So when we are hiring people in, and I know we have mentors, is there anything else we're looking at for when we're onboarding new employees and helping maybe some who aren't maybe comfortable at first to want to stay or to be part of this community? Is there any pieces that?
Yeah. So we didn't include it in our report, because, because it wasn't an official action step. Denise Satterfield was looking at creating supports for new teachers in their first three years. And she came to the conclusion that this, it was something that all teachers needed, and that there was probably more support that, that could be needed. So it's an area for further exploration, but it was discussed.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for all your work. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Wensky?
Yeah, it's a great report. I love to see the, you know, just the progress year over year. And I appreciate all the time that you all spend on this really important initiative. And I do have to say, a lot of my notes were around paraeducators. We had some really great candid discussions with the paraeducators at the beginning of the school year. And to see 77% of the respondents interested in becoming teachers, it's outstanding. You know, we, as you mentioned, we do have some very highly educated paraeducators. Definitely, I think, it sounds like in some cases it's a communication thing, just to kind of understand the process. I think that was definitely evident in some of the, the comments in the survey. You definitely hear the, the work-life balance challenges. But it sounds to me like, you know, just kind of explaining what options are available to our paraeducators to potentially pursue becoming a teacher, you know, or things that maybe might help, you know, just get them to that next step.
Glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
Because I think that you're right on the right track.
Right.
I think two of the barriers, sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
Your flow, I thought you were done.
No, you're good, you're good.
Two of the barriers, as you dig into the detail, is, is that we've never really operationalized. And so we are working already on putting together a flow chart on how you go from step to step in licensure. And we're already talking about things to put online that people can easily access, which will be very helpful. But one of the barriers, for sure, is that if you've received your bachelor's degree in another country, you have to go through an equivalency process here, which can be costly, you know, a few hundred dollars. So that's a barrier for some people. And then if, for some reason, your educational attainment isn't deemed, you know, equal to a bachelor's degree in the United States, then you have to go back to school. So, sorry.
No, it's okay. No, it's, it's, no, it's helpful. You know, we definitely want our paras to grow within our district. It's, it's a win-win, right? Have their career grow along with retaining our top talent among our paraeducators. Just outstanding that the students know them, the staff know them, they do some outstanding work. And, you know, we hope that, you know, some of that additional tuition reimbursement that's in that new contract helps to a degree, but just, I really appreciate the engagement there with the paras. And again, thank you for participation in this initiative.
I, I do want to add on to that, too. Having the paras involved in the conversation, did we, in past years, have we had paras?
No.
We have not. So this is, so more important that they were on it and that you went to the source to really see, I mean, it's one thing for all of us to say, oh, this might be a good idea, but for somebody to say, well, actually, like, this is, this affects me and this is the path that I want to go on. I think it's really important, and I hope that more paras, whether it's this initiative or other ones, that they get more involved, because their voices is very important to the conversation. And this helps us kind of frame what we do going forward. So I appreciate that. I, I think that their feedback was very valuable to this. And I do hope, because again, we do have a lot of paras that do awesome work in the district. They're very educated, they're part of the conversation. And if we can keep them in the district and we can put them on that path to becoming a, a full-time teacher, that's even, it's a, it's a win-win for us. So thank you for, for doing this and continuing the work. I look forward to seeing, again, even in a few months and then next year when we report back what that looks like, because I think this is a huge step for the district in making sure that we're, we're keeping people in the district and we're, we're having the same quality educators that are here.
Yeah. I have had people ask me since we gave the survey what the next steps are for our, for our committee and what will be coming forward. So I told them our next step was to report to the school. But there is, there is that interest there, which I really appreciate. So I hope that we do continue.
That's great.
That's a terrific presentation. I think I liked the breakdown of the data points. I think that's, data tells the story. So my education question here, forgive me. So how long does it take from a, in a process-wise, how long does it take for a para to go get into fully licensed and be a professional? And same by, same way, how, if it's a daily sub, if they want to be in that path, how long for, for them it takes?
Well, that's a great question. So essentially, to get the provisional licensure, you need to do a few things. You need to have either a bachelor's degree in the United States or an equivalency from another country and go through that equivalency. That can take a few weeks up to a few months, depending on how quickly you're moving with the company that you choose, that the Department of Education will accept. Then you do have to take MTELs for every kind of licensure that's available. The one that crosses all roles, all kinds of roles, is the Communication and Literacy MTEL. And that becomes an obstacle if English is somebody's second language. So again, that may depend on the, how quickly the person studies for it, how quickly they pass it, how many times they need to take it. And, and then there are, for specific other licenses, there are other MTELs involved. So that can vary from person to person. And then for some roles, particularly those in special education, you need to learn special education competencies. So you need to have an on-the-job internship, essentially, with a teacher with the specific license that you want assisting you with that. So I would say it could take a good year to get a provisional license. And that's, you know, often in tandem with trying to be a long-term substitute or work in a paraeducator role. So I would say at least a year. To obtain your initial license, you do have to have been in your provisional licensure teaching full-time for at least three years. And then there are further requirements. And then for the professional license, you need a master's degree in education. So it can, it can be quite a long haul, anywhere from a year to a number of years.
May I have a follow-up?
Yes.
So with the, within the same subset of population that we are, we are tracking, your team is tracking, so what's the retention rate? Is there a retention pattern, the similar retention, or?
Yeah. I think within the paraeducators, the retention has, actually, when you look in the statistics, it's actually been, been pretty good within the Asian population in particular. Within our teachers, we have had some turnover. So we've held our own in terms of our percentages, but looking at why there's turnover when we attract people in to be professional educators and then they're leaving after a year, two years, three years. I think that's where people may feel like there aren't quite enough of them yet to really feel comfortable in some situations. That's changing. There's so many more now. A member of our team at one time was the only Black staff member in the entire district. And of course, we have many more than that now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to also thank you for the report. It's extremely helpful. We enjoy seeing you once a year at this time to kind of get an update. I appreciate the, your willingness to pivot on certain things now, you know, when you're, I guess, when you weren't seeing so much success with the, the job fairs and looking now to develop more relationships with the universities directly. And that's, I know that's a work in progress, but I think it's just, it's very helpful. I'd like to thank all the other folks that are on the committee, too. I know it's a lot of time and extra effort, so appreciate all of your efforts. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. I really appreciate, excuse me, I really appreciate the, the work that the team did under Ms. Malone's leadership and, you know, all the things that were mentioned and certainly trying to create a pipeline internally for our folks. Also, I was really struck by the various really high-quality presentations that were made to the district leadership team about the process. Because this was not just about the potential for diversifying staff. That's certainly something that we hope is a byproduct. It's a process of how can we have the highest quality vetting process for who we choose to hire to, to teach our kids? I'm reminded of the fairly famous study of when an orchestra started doing auditions without being able to see the performer. And it became a much more diverse orchestra, because they were listening to the quality of the sound and what they were seeing in terms of some of their unconscious biases weren't at play. Our job is to get the highest quality people in our district working with kids. And we know that high quality comes from across a spectrum of backgrounds and, and lived experiences, race, ethnicity, all kinds of different LGBTQ status, whatever it might be. Obviously, when we're going through the hiring process, those are things we can't ask about. And, you know, there's, we want to attract people to our district because they share our values, they want to be a place where excellence is celebrated and where diversity and well-being of all is celebrated. And by attracting a great pool of people and then having a process that really can identify people in a way that does not unintentionally bring unconscious bias into it, I think is very important. So, you know, trying to continue the tradition of excellence we've had for many years, and at the same time, overall, over time, being able to have educator, educator staff, para staff, all of our support staff that reflects the community that we're in, which has been, as it always has, growing in diversity and changing over time. So to me, it's exciting work. It's, it's slow work in many ways, but there's a lot of byproducts that just make us better as, as an organization. So I want to thank the, the team and Ms. Malone for all their time and expertise and dedication to this work. And we'll be back next fall with some other, some updated goals around how we can do this work going forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda tonight, we've amended our agenda. We were going to take a vote on a memorandum of understanding between the a vote on a memorandum of understanding between the school committee and the Shrewsbury cafeteria workers. However, that agreement is still being finalized. Accordingly, we will not be taking that, that agenda item up tonight. We will be postponing that vote to our meeting on June 11th. The next item on our amended agenda is a recommendation for town meeting, Article 32, the establishment of the Shrewsbury High School Building Committee. Some background information, the Massachusetts State Building Authority has issued an invitation to the town of Shrewsbury to enter the eligibility phase of its building project pipeline for potential future expansion project at Shrewsbury High School, where the Mass School Building Authority will consider partnering with the town to jointly fund such a project. One of the required components of eligibility phase is to form a local building committee for the project in order to move into the next phase of feasibility study, which would look at what options could most cost-effectively solve the problem of chronic overcrowding at the high school, as well as to replace critical building elements such as the roof and HVAC system. At the annual town meeting, which begins this coming Monday, May 19th, town meeting members will consider Article 32, which if voted in the affirmative by simple majority vote, will establish this required building committee. So the thought tonight would be to take a vote on a recommendation to town meeting. Does anyone have any comments or discussion on this?
After having served on a school building committee along with you, Ms. Boucher, I think, talking about the MSBA and the process, it's a very phased approach and it's very measured and very balanced. And as you go through that process, there are several points within that where the community can decide at some point that this is not the best way to, to move forward. But at this point, there isn't, we don't have an option. We don't have a cost. That's why we need to have a feasibility study. So this phase, starting with a school building committee, getting that together, because that's the group that we'll be looking at as part of that, moving into the feasibility with education plan, student population demographics, all of that is part of this. So at this point, we don't know what the best option is because we haven't done a feasibility study. So we need to do this first phase of getting the building committee in place to then move into the feasibility study. And again, MSBA has several periods within that the community can ultimately decide not to move forward. So I fully support moving forward with the school building committee. It's the, it's the next step in this. There's nothing at stake at this point. There would be some money in that warrant article for the building committee to look at different, maybe architects and things, but it is part of the process. And having worked with the MSBA closely, it's an excellent process. They, they will come back with an option that is cost-effective as possible and it meets the long-term need of a building. So I'm fully in support of this and I think it's something that I would hope the town meeting members also support.
Thank you. Mr. Wensky?
Yeah, thank you. I do support this article. And I don't think it's unfamiliar to many in town. I mean, I know as long as I've been on the committee, for the last 10 years, we've been talking about overcrowding at, at the high school. And two years ago, we did submit a statement of interest to MSBA, and it wasn't accepted in that first pass. The needs were greater in other communities. We resubmitted it the following year and it, it was accepted, right? And, you know, here we are now, you know, the submission was accepted for the state to potentially fund up to 50% of construction costs on a potential high school expansion. We've been through this before. We've had some very successful projects in town, on time and under budget. So, you know, I think MSBA chose us for a reason, right? They don't, they don't just hand out these invitations to any district, right, that submits. I mean, we accepted, we were accepted into the eligibility phase. And because of that detailed review that they did on the data that we provided, where the high school is at 99% capacity, that's far beyond the MSBA's 80% standard, right? So the needs are real. The data tells the story, as does, you know, walking through the high school on a busy day. And, you know, we know that we've turned these classrooms and closets into makeshift offices. This is not, you know, some type of like luxury project. It's, it's just to get, you know, our building to, you know, a, a status where it can service the enrollment that we have, right? So, and I think you said it, you know, right, Ms. Fritz, I think for something that could save taxpayers tens of millions of dollars, the voters really should have a say in this decision. You know, there's just no doubt. I mean, you can't, it's not something that, you know, the five of us can sit here and say, you know what, you know, maybe they shouldn't have a say. They should absolutely have a say in this decision.
Right.
You know? And, and again, I, I think it's also important to note, as you mentioned, nobody knows what options we have in front of us. We haven't done any feasibility study for anybody to say that this is going to cost X, Y, and Z. We don't know.
We don't know.
It's just, it just doesn't exist. So I think it's important to make sure that the residents of this town weigh in on this project, because I know it's on the minds of a lot of people. And, you know, they, they should be heard. So I do support this recommendation from our board.
You raised a point that I wanted to make. When we talk about being accepted into the MSBA pipeline, we call it, we, we were pretty used to having that happen. And when we weren't for the high school, the first time we put in, I was surprised, thinking, well, we seem to always be able to go into that. So we reapplied. We are in the pipeline. And looking at the MSBA today versus maybe our other projects, we have to also recognize it's different. There's a lot more schools in the state that are going to the MSBA and hoping to be accepted. And there's also a finite pool of money. So I think if this project does not go forward, my concern, not only as a school committee member, but as a taxpayer, is we may never get back into that pipeline. And as Mr. Wensky mentioned, when there's a 50% plus reimbursement rate, as a taxpayer, I look at that as something beneficial, because we know we have to do the roof and we know we have to do an HVAC system no matter what. And that's going to be significant. And I think it was 26, 27 million dollars in March when we asked what the possible cost for that would be. And that will have to be done regardless.
If you don't mind. No, in, in addition to that, too, I think, you know, there is a risk here because the needs are, there are other needs across the state, right? And, you know, if, if we miss out on this opportunity, it might not come back. And I think we'd be having a different conversation if we were sitting here talking about the town having to fund 100% of the construction costs. I think the other piece, too, and I had it in my notes, I mean, you know, there, there is, you know, the building's been there since 2002. So, you know, in addition to needing the expansion, there's also part of this project that would include, you know, I would assume like the roof.
Regular maintenance.
Yeah, regular maintenance, the roof and the HVAC, right? I mean, so, so that, that's all part of it. So I think it's really important, as I mentioned, to have the residents weigh in, weigh in on this because of the financial impact here.
I mean, both of you nailed it there, but I think it's really important. I am also in, in support of moving us along in the process and forming the, the building committee because, again, this is, this is really important to, to the bigger conversation, because we don't have finite details. We don't have a finite cost. This is, this is gathering as much information as humanly possible to be able to put those options down, to be able to have a conversation with the town, who ultimately, that yes, the five of us are sitting here and obviously, we very much would like this to, to happen and to, to go forward because this is important. However, we need to be able to, to collect that information and present that. And the only way to do that is to put it into the next phase of, of, of the process. And again, I think it, it would only be beneficial to us that we are in the pipeline. And I am also very worried that if we come out of that, I'm not sure what that looks like for us. I don't know if we would ever get back into it for the high school. And if we do, that is years down the line. And we don't necessarily have years in terms of needing to make changes at the high school. So I think it's important for us to, to continue on in the process, to just gather all the information we have, present it, and we take it step by step, because there are step-by-step processes in this, in this whole thing. And that is for a reason. So I do, like I said, I agree with this. I would, I very much like this to move on to the next step so that we can collect the information that we need to, do it correctly, put it to the town, and then have a conversation at that point.
Yeah, thank you. So I echo the comments and sentiments shared by the colleagues. So I think, this is my second time. So as we, as we deliberated in FinCom, my, my comments are same here, too. This is still an exploratory phase. We just need to understand what we need and how much it will cost. So without knowing that, it's, it's, it's a guess game at this point. So to, just to reach to that point, we need to have this step done so that the committee can sit in and work with MSBA, MSBA, and get to that needs and, and costs associated to those needs. So it, I'd strongly recommend the town meeting members look into this and support this, this, because there is, there's several off-ramp opportunities, as, as everyone mentioned, right? So this is not binding in any way. This is only a step that is required as a part of the, to be in the pipeline. So, and then there's always several off-ramp opportunities down the lane. When it, when we clearly know what the need is, what the cost associated to that, then town has a, town committee has a, where a community has a greater opportunity to decide at that point. But simply moving, now dropping off the pipeline will, will, will not serve us any, any, we'll lose all the opportunity to define those things. So for that reason, I, I do support to move ahead with this article and looking forward to the town meeting.
I'm also supportive of the Warren article to establish the building committee along with Ms. Fritz. I had the privilege of serving on the Build Building Committee, and I can attest to what a thorough and thoughtful process the MSBA, it's very well-run. It provides for, for, you know, a very clear formula of how you move forward. And by following the MSBA process, it would allow our community to determine what the viable options are to address the overcrowding at the high school and to look at the cost, because currently we don't know that. And by obtaining this information, it will allow town meeting members and the community to have all the information necessary to make an informed decision about the merits of a potential project. So I'm in favor. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. I mean, I certainly use my recommendation for all the reasons cited. Just a reminder about sort of timing of the way the project would work. If things go forward through the eligibility phase and next fall, if town meeting were to allocate funding to move into the next phase, which would essentially allow the town to form a project team of a designer, architect, and a project manager, to then do the feasibility study and then schematic design to provide what these options would be and what costs would be. The MSBA process itself, it would not be the, until the earliest of summer of 2027, essentially August, we think of 2027, that a, a project funding agreement would be, be able to be made. And that, at that point, you know, the earliest that would happen would be the fall of 2027, when there would be potentially a special town meeting vote and then a town-wide debt exclusion vote in order to make a decision about the project, if the process we followed for Sherwood and for Beal went forward. But there is a timeline. And because it's such a thorough process, it takes significant time. And again, this is an initial step in the eligibility phase to be able to engage in those elements to do the feasibility study and beyond. So with that, I would certainly recommend that the committee vote to recommend to town meeting to support Article 32. And we'll look forward to that conversation at town meeting next week.
So I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to recommend that town meeting members vote yes on Article 32 at the 2025 Annual Town Meeting in order to establish a building committee for potential future Shrewsbury High School expansion project in partnership with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next man on our agenda tonight is the approval of minutes. We were given the minutes from the school committee meeting held on April 30th of 2025. Did anyone have any changes or corrections?
Uh-uh.
Okay, because those can be deemed accepted as distributed. And then we do need to go into executive session tonight. So I will seek a motion. We're going, need to go into, request a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of addressing general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, Purpose 7, open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. B, for the purpose of addressing general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Parent Professional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. C, for the purpose of addressing general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators, Purpose 2. And D, for the purpose of addressing general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, federal and Massachusetts student record laws, Purpose 7, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. This motion recall, needs a roll call vote. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Ms. Riefenbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Palagapooti?
Aye.
Aye, Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you and good night.